Looks like we're ready to go. It is 9:00 AM, perfect timing. Thank you, everybody, for setting this up. Today is September 21st, 2021. It is the regular meeting for the Lake County Board of Supervisors. We will call this meeting to order and start with a moment of silence. Does anybody on the board have a moment of silence? Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I have one for Vanessa Nico. My shirt today is in remembrance of Vanessa Nico. Her family today is coming to a court hearing that's been delayed for quite some time. She was taken from us on June 30th, 2017. And so I just wanted to wear this in honor of her and so that her family can hopefully have some, you know, rest with that situation, so.
Thank you very much. And Vice Chair Crandall, if you could please lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Yes. Ready again. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recording stopped.
Oh, I'm not sure. I think it's Zoom.
Recording in progress.
Is it correct here? I'm texting Jake.
Mr. Rothstein, we do not have a board projection of what's going on inside the boardroom. I do see that we have IT 13 instead of our usual CLVG or something like that.
It's the same thing.
Okay.
There we go.
And it looks like it's unmuted now, but no video. Thank you for catching that. I believe they can hear us now. I don't know. It was muted at first, the IT 13.
We can hear you. We just can't see you.
Looks like we are under Jake today. Thank you very much for catching that. So we're going to move on to item number four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Are there any extra items to add to this agenda? And seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to our next one is approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items from board members that wish to pull from the consent agenda? Are there any items that supervisors wish to pull? Sorry, that wasn't a very good sentence. I am going to pull item 5.3 for further discussion. Had the conversation with Director Metcalf, and we'll take that up after the 7.4. Any other items from staff? And then let's go ahead and open up for the public. Are there any items that the public wishes to pull from the consent agenda, both in the boardroom and in the Zoom room? If you're in the Zoom room, please press the button at the bottom of your screen to raise your hand. If you're calling via telephone, dial *9. And again, this is for pulling an item from the consent agenda. And seeing none, let's go ahead and take action at the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.2 and 5.4 through 5.6.
You have a motion from Supervisor Scott, a second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Piska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sebastian?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to item 6.1, our 9:05 AM item. Perfect timing, public input. And I have two items here. Let's go ahead and whoever wants to speak first, come to the microphone in the board chambers. And please state your name, and you have three minutes.
My name is Rayo Levi. I live at Riviera West, 3480. On August 10th, I presented to this board a series of very basic questions concerning the water situations within the county. I have yet to receive a response, nothing. During that period of time between then and now, my daughter, who is a research, she's a water soil scientist, a graduate from UC Davis, and I spent an incredible amount of hours, and I want to compliment the Water Department, if they're anywhere around, on the amount of research, et cetera, that they apparently have. The problem is, it's very difficult because it's spread all over the place. My first question is, who is responsible for producing that information? And when is there a report? When has there been a report generated using all of that incredible information to the board, to the public, to let us know what's going on? We have spent an incredible, as I said, an amount of hours, amount of time, going through those. And there's a few things that have become very obvious. One is, who controls the water? It appears that the board does not control the water. It appears that the corporations, the vineyards, the orchards, and the people who are growing marijuana, they have no reporting that they are required to do to show what the impacts are on our aquifers. And the aquifers are in trouble right now, hence the dry wells. The problem with that is, is that when they dry, the aquifers start to drive out to get cave-ins. So where the water was stored once before underground, they fill up with dirt, rocks, and everything else. So when we do get some water back, I don't know if it's going to be the same. Nobody knows at this point because nobody's produced reports. There was a report that was issued that I got from the Sheriff's Department in which they talked about the health. And they told the well owners that they are not to drink the water until they do A, B, and C. That's only part of the problem. We've got Robinson Slough, which is virtually dry. It's dammed off. There's no water going from the lake into that. And there's no report telling us what the impacts are on the soil, on wildlife, and on people around the slough. We haven't been able to find any. It doesn't mean that there's not somewhere, but we haven't been able to find them. We have been realizing that the corporations really will not even put meters or will not allow us to put tracking on the demands that they place on this water supply. I've heard so many excuses, "Well, we own the water." "Well, you don't have a right." That's baloney. They're putting everybody at risk right now. There are people who are having a lot of trouble getting water, and it's going to get worse because the long-range forecasts indicate that we probably won't get much rainwater at all next year.
And your three minutes are up. If you can give us your final comment?
Yes, I can. I wish we could have finished up the report, but at 2:00 in the morning, you get tired. And I'm 84. We will get a, we will put a formal report together for the board to take a look at. I hope that you do. I hope that somebody says to the people who are using this water, including the pipes...
And sir, if we can finish up, please?
I'm going to finish up right now. The pipes are running into the lake. When you go to the dam from Anderson, where are they there? Why are they there? There's water being sucked out, and nobody seems to know about it. I would like to know. When are we going to get some control over that?
Sir...
That's my question. It's all I have. I don't want to take anybody else's time.
Thank you very much, sir. And I would suggest you speak with the Blue Ribbon Committee, that you might get some answers there. Our Water Resources will be coming back, or at least our drought task force will be coming back in October with some items. They discuss some of those things in front of us, so please look for those items. And thank you again for your comment.
The Blue Ribbon Committee meeting is Thursday at 1:00 PM.
I'm sorry?
The Blue Ribbon Committee meeting is 1:00 PM on this Thursday.
Could you tell me just one thing? Are they going to have any reports at all that the public can read?
And if we can...
They will.
Sir, if it's possible, if we can have that conversation outside, that way we don't have the conversation right here during public comment.
I don't understand. Okay. I understand rules and regulations, and I appreciate the rules and regulations that you have, but there's only two people in here.
No, sir. If it's not on the agenda, the public has not been prepared, nor has the board to have the discussion, therefore it's a Brown Act violation to have that discussion without preparing the public in knowledge that this will be happening.
Will you address the issues that I've raised?
And we can have those conversations, absolutely. But at this moment in time, we can't.
Is anybody going to respond to me?
And let's have that conversation outside of the board. Next public comment, please.
My name is Joan Moss. I am working on a paper. I'm a student at Mendocino College Computer Lab and Beginning Computer to refresh my internet. But I want to read this, and I want to hand it out to you. Citizens for Healing is a local group of citizens dedicated to acknowledging the genocide that occurred in the 1800s and changing the name of Calseville. Kevin Engel, a local historian, is finishing his life work that documents the bounties the government paid for scalps, heads, fingers of dead American, Native Americans between 1849 and 1873. Members of the Citizens for Healing, I am one. I have begun to research Canocti. And along with a friend, Dennis, I'm working on published information that I've gathered. This doesn't need editing, but I'm going to edit it Thursday. I'm still handing it out. The Lake County Agenda Materials states that Lake County will allow USGS to continue its research. The USGS is the United States Geological Survey, working for the U.S. Department of Interior, that has equipment to measure earthquakes and seismic activity under Canocti, and more equipment at Calpine Geothermal Visitors Center in Middletown, near the geysers, investigating the seismic activity at the geysers. And there's a picture, a little bit controversial. We learned this from Ann Carr, "To greet the visitors, greetings in the light of the radiant one." This is a first-page picture, a book that is already published by Benjamin Madley about the genocide that took place in California. That's why citizens want to change the name of Calseville. I know this is a little bit varied, but I want to give you each a copy and give Carolyn a copy for your information. The facts are true, some of the typos need correction. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I know. I handed this in to Bruno a couple weeks ago, but the last page is by Dennis, and he wanted to speak to that, but you can read it. He gave it to me for publication.
Thank you.
We are not alone.
Thank you for your comment. I see no hands up in the Zoom room. So we're going to go ahead and move on to our 9:06 AM item, consideration of update on COVID-19. And today with us, we have Angela Cuellar Marroquin and also Ernesto Padilla, who are our guests to speak on this item. And Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm really pleased to be able to introduce these two speakers today. As you know, we're trying to vary the COVID-19 update to your board so that we can make sure all perspectives are considered. And so in anticipation that today the report would really focus on the Latino and tribal communities, you know, to really speak to the ways that they have been impacted and how they're faring, we had Dr. Gary Pace record a video in advance that gives the more technical update as to where we're at with COVID-19. And Matthew Rothstein will take just a moment to tell people where they can find that.
Yes, that video is available now on the County of Lake Facebook page, as well as on the County of Lake YouTube channel. So if you go to youtube.com and search County of Lake CA, then you'll find it pretty readily. And also, if you go to the County of Lake Facebook page, which is Facebook.com/LakeCountyCA.gov, it's also right there and available for you. So we hope that anyone interested will go to one of those locations and watch our standard AP briefing with Dr. Pace.
Thank you, Matthew. And so with that said, I'd like to turn it over to Angela and Ernesto. We can start with you, Ernesto, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you very much, Carolyn, and good morning, board. I want to take this opportunity to thank Lake County Public Health for the partnership that they've had with Lake County Tribal Health. And I'll go through some of the initiatives and outreach efforts that we've gone through and participated and partnered with in the county as I go through this brief summary of kind of our activity here at Tribal Health regarding the tribal community. We started vaccinating January 4th, 2021, when we received our first shipment of vaccines from the Indian Health Service. We got them a little bit earlier since we went directly and didn't go through the state. To date, we have administered four about, and all these numbers are approximate, I'm rounding up, or to the closest thousand. 4,000 total vaccines. Out of those 4,000, 1,000 have been administered to native patients. Within those thousands, within those thousand of native patients, there's about 650 individual patients. Total individual patients of Lake County Tribal Health, including natives, have been So if we look at that compared to the native population in Lake County, which is about 3,000, and we figure that about 2/3 of those are at vaccination age, and we take the 656 we administered here, that's about 33% of the population that has received a vaccine from us here. From the start, we started having what we called the stand downs on the weekends. We started, we had them in February of '21, March, and April, took a break in May, and then started again in June. And on those, we would have them over the weekend to allow people to come in. It was a drive-through. We had a staff here on-site. In January, we did Moderna. February, we did Moderna. March, we did the Johnson. And then in June, we administered the Pfizer to pediatric patients. The demand started strong, you know, on the first stand downs we had here on our parking lots on the weekends. And in February, we had averaging about 300 patients that would come through per weekend. And we had the respective booster shots scheduled, you know, 28 or 30 days after in the same month. But the demand started dropping, you know, especially when we brought in the Pfizer for youth and did the pediatric stand down, we only saw 42 patients there. Now, we've worked together on outreach efforts with the public health. We can only vaccinate our own patients, and we carry the Moderna and the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And Public Health has joined us, and they've administered the Pfizer due to the cold, build the cold storage requirements. So we actually went and went around the lake and visited all the tribal rancherias administering vaccines to residents and tribal staff, so they were both native and non-native. This happened in June and July. And we saw that the demand was a little low, you know, vaccinating anywhere between 5 and 10 patients per rancheria. We've had other stand downs as well. We also have Vaccination Monday through Friday here on-site walk-in, and we're not seeing a lot of demand for those at this point. We saw a little bit increase due to the Delta variant. We had a little increase in demand there. And then again, after the state and federal mandates for employment. But now we're back to the regular numbers where it's very, very limited, very wanted to update. At this point, I think everyone who's wanted a vaccine has gotten it. We're, we continue to have education efforts. The California Rural Indian Health Board has put out a series of flyers and videos. They're culturally sensitive, and I know Kyle Bill and Rose do have also worked in putting some of those documents and flyers together for the native community in efforts to increase the education and increase vaccination. Other than that, we just continue to offer it here. On Monday through Thursday, we vaccinate the Moderna, and on Fridays, we do the Johnson &amp; Johnson, just to keep the dates clear and the vaccines separate. For example, this Friday, we are closed in observance of California Indian Day. However, we will be open just to do a stand down for influenza vaccine and COVID vaccines for our Native Americans here. So we continue to have these efforts. And again, I just want to thank the partnership that we've had with Public Health in going out with us and being able to vaccinate those committee members that want our patients or didn't want the Moderna or Johnson &amp; Johnson, prefer the Pfizer. I want to thank that team out there. You know, everyone's understaffed right now, including us. Our regular diabetes didn't take a break for COVID. We're still seeing all those patients, and at any given day, we're 15 to 20 employees down. But the people here, our staff and the staff there at Public Health, have kept working towards the same goal. And, you know, it's been 18 months that we've been on the front line, so I just want to acknowledge them and thank them for their partnership, and my team too, so, on all these efforts that we've been doing. And of course, some of the chairmen, even some are on the board, they've worked with us as well as facilitating these onsite stand downs at each of the rancherias. That's pretty much a brief summary of what the activity we've had at Tribal Health.
Thank you very much for your presentation and definitely for your efforts on the front line. Let's go ahead and move on to Angela Cuellar Marroquin.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Thank you, board members, for allowing us to go ahead and share all the work that we've been doing. Anna Santana couldn't join us today, but on behalf of both of us, we thank you for trusting us to collaborate with Public Health in order to try to reach our Latino community as much as we possibly can. So we started off in, you know, January with our efforts, and we started seeing, you know, the hesitancy, that was the biggest thing. And so we decided that obviously a language barrier was there. So we took it upon ourselves to open up a specific, you know, time. We started off with just, you know, on Fridays from 9 to 5, if you wanted to make an appointment and you were Spanish-speaking and you needed support with making an appointment, we opened up five different phone numbers in our Office of Ed of our five employees that are working on this grant. And the first day, I think we made roughly about over 300 appointments. So we managed to get most of our farm workers in and quick, and it was just an amazing thing to watch at the actual location because we did go and help with translation as well at the actual event of the vaccines at the drive-through. So it was, it was really good to see that we had quite a low number, and then it jumped within a month to 19%. So it was about 6% of vaccinated Latino community members, and then it jumped to 19% after just one month. So just seeing that, we kind of figured this is what we need to continue to do. So we keep continuing to share on our Facebook Latinos United page information where you can call us, how you can call us if you need anything, not just regards to COVID-19, but resources for food, any other rental assistant programs. We support that as well. As people did become positive, they were comfortable with calling us. Anna, being the Healthy Start Director, could direct staff to, you know, get those resources of food to peoples because they couldn't leave their homes. So we were really excited to see that, you know, they've built, we've built that trust with everybody. So seeing, you know, at first, and just like Ernesto said, it's kind of died down, you know, each month. And I went on and looked, and each month, it's grown about, you know, 3% to 5%. But those first couple of months were really crucial, and the more people hear that they're getting vaccinated, they tell their friends, their friends get it, and their family members. And so we just continued to push that and share the messaging that we're given from Public Health, things we find. We try to get local people, that people know, to try to share their stories or why they got vaccinated, which is one of our, one of the biggest things we did just recently on September 12th in Calseville. Again, Tribal Health, great partner because they sponsored the event, and they thought of that as well as vaccinating there. And I, and I'm sure Ernesto, I think I heard it was 23 people got vaccinated that day. And that's 23 more people we didn't have. So our idea at our booth that we did that day was, we wanted people to come and share, you know, why did they get vaccinated? And if they're not vaccinated, what was the hesitancy? But I think the majority, I think we had maybe between 4 and 10 people, if that, that were not vaccinated that came to our booth. And, you know, misinformation, of course, is the number one thing that people are resistant is, you know, getting the chip, or people are dying with the vaccine. And there's all these things that are pushing those, you know, resistencies in our community. But everyone else kept coming, and they're like, "No, I'm vaccinated. I'm vaccinated." So what we did is, we said, "Okay, well, tell us why you got vaccinated." And they were honest and true to why they got vaccinated. It wasn't, you know, just a generic, it was, "I don't want to die, and I want to see my family. I want my grandchildren to experience having me in their life." You know, there were lots of different things. So what we did is, we asked permission. We took their pictures with their hashtag of their whys and compiled a video. It's on our Facebook page. I figured it was a good time to post it after we did the leaders video to show people that everyone else is doing it too. We're asking you as leaders, we're asking you as your neighbors, we're asking you as your family, as your friends. So that messaging has been pretty good. It's a little slow, you know, we only have about 400 and something followers, but it's still getting out there. And as people share, and I push my family to share, and it's starting to spread the word that, you know, more and more of our community has been vaccinated. And I think also those numbers are showing at the very beginning of this pandemic, the Latino Hispanic community was the highest rate of COVID-19 active cases, and we were dying. And now we are 21% of the cases. We are not the leading group. So it means we're getting vaccinated, and we are at 57% fully vaccinated. And with the, with the one vaccine numbers, we're only about 37% short of our Latino community being vaccinated. So I think they've built that trust. They trust us, they trust their community, they trust their friends, their neighbors, their families. The most recent efforts we're doing now is we're going out to them. So we did another vaccination event on August 26th, and that was at the Calseville Family Apartments, and they vaccinated 38, 39 people. They did the second dose already, and I think only four people didn't show up for their second dose. So out of all those, that was another, you know, almost 40 people that were not vaccinated before, but we went to them. We went to where they lived. We had a health fair to give information of why it was important. You know, we gave away lots of things to the children that were coming up to our booth. It was just a really feel-good event that you said, okay, you know, we tested and we gave vaccine, and people trusted to come to them. And the hours that we did that was after work, so between 3:00 and 7:00 PM. So it, you know, as much as we can, we've got to meet people where they're at. We're hoping to do another event in Clear Lake. We're trying to see if Mendham Mill, or if we can't get Mendham Mill in Clear Lake, we're going to do the park again, hopefully, again, to try to reach that community that's just right there on Highway 53 in the Mobile Home Parks, where there's a lot of our community still not informed and are not vaccinated. And then another one will be in the Calseville, the other Calseville Apartments, and then hopefully in Lake Court at the Willow Point. So we're coming out to them. We are giving information where they can get the mobile unit and where they can get shots. But when you really take that time to show that you want to show up for our people, they tend to... they tend to even believe it more. So I think that that's, even if it's another person or two, it's still more. So we just are trying to just get out there. And we've been working with Ezekiel from, he's from Sonoma County and he's been doing some efforts in Sonoma County. So we've kind of teamed up with him and more Latino community members and leaders. And that's how we're promoting it. We do, we have Lisa announcing things on her radio show. So we're just, you know, trekking along and just sharing, sharing on Facebook. Facebook is a huge portion of what we're doing, but we're also now, you know, going out and doing in-person events and getting people to really realize that it's that extra layer of protection. It's not going to be 100%, but, but it's an extra layer of protection. And even if you got it, it's protecting you just a little bit more even. So we've, we've lost a few community members that were very known in the community. So a lot of people have really seen that it can happen to any of us. So we're just trying to continue that and, and move forward with those messages. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I definitely want to say thanks to the contracts that we had with LCOE to reach out to our Latino community and also the contract we had with Conocatay to reach out to the native community. And I know that tribal health has been at the forefront since the beginning, even reaching out further than the populations that they are caring for, and I really appreciate that as well. Let's go ahead and bring it to the board for any questions or comments.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I didn't look down at the pen. I saw your eyes. Supervisor Pisca.
Ernesto and Angela, I want to thank you so much. You've been making your presence known in Kelseyville. And I, I've, I've watched how the trust is being built and it really, really matters. And reaching out to the community and going where they are and meeting where they are and having those conversations, it really matters. And we're making, you know, we're in the army crawl of this part of the vaccination campaign. And every single one of these matters. And I, I want to thank you for being at the Kelseyville Apartments for the event on August 26th and for the Dia de la Independencia event. It, it matters and I appreciate everything that you're doing. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Crandall.
Yes. I just got a message from Chairman Cromwell and the administrator from Robinson-Esterstoffer that their Robinson tribe is 40% vaccinated and they share, where they host a vaccination site at the casino on Fridays from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. And Esther had stated that 112 Moderna, 25 Pfizer, and 24, I don't know what KK means, but whatever that one, or Johnson and Johnson, I think that was the mistext. So, so yeah, they're, they're providing, I think, an incentive. I know for Upper Lake, one thing I do know about the Upper Lake is, is that they've lost at least three to four people recently, like I want to say, like within the last two months to COVID-19, weren't vaccinated from what I understand. So, so it's, it's, it's real. It's a real thing. And I appreciate Ernesto and the tribal health organization because a lot of folks will go there in times notice if something's happening and they'll, they'll facilitate for them to make sure that they get a vaccination or a test or something of that nature. And they, they usually do that for the community as well. So just, you know, and I appreciate also Angela's report as well, you know. So, so yeah, just wanted to give that.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, I just want to thank both organizations. Obviously, Lake County Tribal Health being a lot closer to the Middletown Rancheria. You know, obviously, I know that you've come down and done the onsite clinics. And one other thing I just want to say, Ernesto, you touched on it early, that tribal health, you know, went with a direct contract and was able to get those vaccines a little bit quicker. And I really appreciate that, the focus that was put on our tribal elders because, you know, they're the most important assets we have, our children and our elders. So, you know, I really, I really appreciate that. I appreciate the hard work that's been done all throughout. I appreciate the opportunities when you did come and report on the numbers that were happening at the facility and, you know, both with all of our, our brown communities, our Latino community and everything here in Lake County, I appreciate the hard work that's been done. There's still a lot more to do. There's still vaccine hesitancy across each tribal nation I know here and throughout the county with all of our constituents. So we'll continue messaging where people can get educated and make their own decision, make that very clear. It is their own decision, but it is available. So I want to thank both of you. And I also want to thank our Public Health Department because each and every one in the health industry at this point has just been working so hard. And, you know, you see it every day of just the, the stress and everything that they're under right now. It seems like, you know, a never-ending process, but I just want to thank you and everybody in the health industry at this point for all the hard work because it does get tiresome, it does get overwhelming and overburdening because it's just constantly here. We're constantly losing people closer and closer to us, where people are getting sick even younger and younger. So I just wanted to thank you very much. So appreciate everything and we'll keep working and collaborating together.
Thank you for the comments. I, I want to thank you both as well. You took part in a video that we put out last week. I think that's the kind of messaging as well that goes out to the community where there's so many people involved that it can hit every sector of our community because we all live within a little niche of the community. And if we can reach out to individual pockets, we can make an impact and get their attention and listen to the people that they look up to. You're all mentors, you're all leaders, and I think that that messaging is very positive and very impactful. Ernesto.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention one point that I forgot to report on. I think, to my knowledge, five out of the six consortium tribes in Lake County are individually on their own through their tribal organization are offering financial incentives ranging from 500 to $1,000 for their membership to get vaccinated. And we saw a big increase in demand when those were rolled out. So I know that the tribes are doing their part as well in increasing these vaccination efforts. Just wanted to mention that.
Thank you very much. Definitely takes a little bit of everything. Any further comments before we open it up for the public? And before I open it up for the public, some people are having a little bit of fun with their names. It would be really nice if we can all act like adults in the room and if you can maybe write your name so it's easier to call on you. I will not call on you if your name is meant to be a joke or you're trying to be funny. You can speak, but I will not call your name. So we will just work with Matthew to make that work for us because I definitely don't want to, you have a First Amendment right to speak, but at the same time, it would be nice if we could all be respectful in the room. Let's start with phone 4627. And again, please give us your full name and you have three minutes.
Yeah, good morning. This is Tom Slade. Again, I will start out by saying, not all of us agree to call in on our, you know, have a similar line of thinking, but, you know, I speak for myself, so don't confuse me with anybody else, please. I just had two things very quickly about, very briefly about that, that's key is the PCR test apparently is not a test and comes up with false positives that lead to lockdowns that are not needed. But that's a little background. But the thing that I want to speak about COVID is when this first started, I was 76 years old and I was concerned. I wasn't frightened, but I was concerned naturally. But what was so obvious to me is instead of being, doing the responsible thing, governments and particularly media urging everyone to stay calm, it was just the opposite, like just wild fear-mongering, you know, that term, we're all going to die. And that was so, has been so obvious to me all along. And to me, that is the elephant in the room. We see these billionaires are getting more and more. It seems to me to be a huge power grab. People being, a sense of PCR test is, as I'm sure somebody will, Bruno will disagree probably, but is not a test. There's so much that's come out about that. And so unneeded lockdowns, but what I'm getting at more than anything is the, the, just the fear-mongering. To me, that is so obvious. We don't need to be afraid of terrorists anymore because we have, we can be controlled with this new fear. So I hope people will consider that. To me, that is as much the elephant in the room as urging people, you know, whipping up fear instead of calm, being calm and rational. So that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any further public comments? I see no further hands up. Julia Bono.
Hello, can the board hear me?
Yes, we can. If we can mute phone 46, thank you. And then Julia Bono, please, we can hear you. Now you just muted yourself. If we can unmute.
How's that?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Today, I wanted to highlight the legal ramifications of the board and its advisors actively promoting, administering, incentivizing, mandating, and are psychologically pushing vaccines on the population of Lake County. The latest example of this is a promotional video that does not represent in any way a balanced view of any of the risks known to be associated with vaccination. In a letter to President Joe Biden, 24 of the nation's attorneys general said last week that they would seek legal action if the White House's proposal to require vaccines for 100 million Americans is carried out. The prosecutors chastised the president for his proposed federal vaccine requirement measure affecting employees of larger private sector employers, healthcare workers, and federal contractors. The vaccine requirement is being enacted in an underhanded manner through a rule from the Occupational Safety and Health Administration rather than through the established legislative process. In their letter, the prosecutors stated, "Your plan is disastrous and counterproductive, and if your administration does not alter its course, the undersigned state attorneys general will seek every available legal option to hold you accountable and uphold the rule of law." I wanted to echo the sentiment of those prosecutors to the Lake County Board of Supervisors and its medical establishment mouthpieces with a serious warning. If you do not stop promoting potentially disastrous vaccine mandates and vaccines that have known harmful side effects, as demonstrated by the huge number of adverse incident and death reports made to the CDC VAERS database, then your concerned constituents and any other harm parties will have no option but to hold you all legally and financially accountable and to take all legal measures to stop you from continuing to do this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any further comments before we bring it back to the board? And seeing none, let's go ahead and close public comment in the Zoom room and open it up in the board chambers. Please go ahead and come to the microphone. Give us your name and you have three minutes.
I remember as a child learning the scientific method, which is getting all the facts and then coming to a conclusion. I want to commend you for listening to the people speak, all the people. And I want to tell you that getting all the facts is very important. Are you getting all the facts? It seems to me you're getting the side of the CDC and the World Health Organization without, without taking seriously all the facts. And so what the citizens do is get their facts and they're called conspiracists and they're, and they're looked down for having supported the people with the conspiracy theory. I want to remind you that the people who related to Martin Luther King had a trial and the jury came back that the people that killed him were conspiracy, was a conspiracy between the FBI, CIA, local law enforcement, et cetera. And I have the book to show you that. It's by James Douglas. Now we're going to have Robert Francis Kennedy write a book about Dr. Fossey. I can't wait to read it because doctor, I mean, the attorney, Robert Francis Kennedy is a lawyer and he's won many cases. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And any further comments in the boardroom? All right. And that closes public comment and bringing it back to the board. Any further comments or questions before we close up this item? And again, appreciate both of your work and your efforts. And I know that it's not always easy because of the fact that this is such a divisive and controversial topic, unfortunately. I think that hopefully all of us, no matter in the Zoom room or in the boardroom, could agree that our job is to do what's best to protect the people we serve. And we are doing the best with the information that we have at our disposal, even though that information sometimes does change based on what we learn because this is all new as of the end of 2019 and early 2020. And so this is always going to be a fluid situation and we just need to, again, do the best we can with what we have. But again, I appreciate your efforts, both you, yourself, your staff, and your agencies for what you're doing to help us. All right. Let's go ahead and move on to 6.3. Presentation of proclamation declaring September 17th and 24th Native American Days in Lake County. And this is from Supervisor Crandall and Supervisor Simon.
I think I see Ron. Ron, would you like to come up and stand with me up here while I read the proclamation?
Please.
Ron, do you want to come up as well?
Yeah.
Ron Montez is one of our elders of the Lake County community from Big Valley. All right. So there's a proclamation here for it's declaring September 17th and the week of September 17th through 24th is Native American Days in California. It's California Native American Days. And so this is a very interesting, there's a difference between this one and other Indian Days. This is for California specifically, and each tribe holds their own specific celebrations at their, at their, at their reservations and whatnot. So just, just for the public to know that this is a California holiday. And so this proclamation is, whereas Lake County has been home to people for greater than 12,000 years and the rich, the richly diverse cultures of the seven tribal nations indigenous to Lake County, Middletown Rancheria of Pomo Indians of California, the Coy Nation of Northern California, Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Scotts Valley Band of Pomo Indians, Habematalil Pomo Indians of Upper Lake, Robinson Rancheria of Pomo Indians of California, and the ELM Indian Colony have informed every aspect of our community's history. And whereas Native Americans have helped to make our community stronger and more prosperous, and whereas we celebrate the richness of the county's unique tribal history and traditions and the impact Native American cultures have had on every American. And whereas in 2019, our board took the historic step of declaring each second Monday in October Indigenous Peoples' Day in Lake County in affirmation of our commitment to honoring this unique and powerful, powerful local history. And whereas Lake County is committed to protecting the sovereign right of Native American tribal organizations and institutions to strengthen their own communities. And whereas in observance of Native American Day, the County of Lake encourages all citizens to join in recognizing the accomplishments and contributions Native Americans have made to our county and salutes those who have sought to honor the important role of tribal leadership in our county's past, present, and future. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors declares Friday, September 17th and Friday, September 24th, 2021, Native American Days in Lake County, California. Passed and adopted this 21st day of September, 2021.
Oh. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I appreciate all the hardships that you guys have to endure to help this community prosper and to make decisions which affect us all. I appreciate your positions and pray the Creator would watch over you and help you in those decisions. My name is Ron Montez, Senior. I'm 71 years old and from the Big Valley Band of Pomo Indians. I'm also the tribal historic preservation officer. My history is that I was raised, I was born in Calusa in 1949. My mother was a single mom. We moved back to our rancheria, Big Valley. And there I was raised on the rancheria as it was back in the early 50s. We then moved to ELM and I was raised there through my school years. Ultimately went to high school and graduated in 1968. There was a legacy there with Indian athletes. Athletics was the only thing that kept me in school. Athletics was the only thing that kept me in school. And I'm proud to say that my cousin Marvin Brown became the first, the homecoming king for the Lower Lake Trojans. And then after him, I became the homecoming king in 1968. After me, Thomas Brown became the homecoming king in 69, 67, Richard Stewart, all of us from Elam Indian Colony. It was called Sulphur Bank in those days. And so today, I encourage our youth to know more and to seek more of their history, to know their roots and where they come from. As has been stated, we've been here for longer than 12,000 years. Not many peoples can say that, that history. We have been through very hard times with the Spanish that came, and then also with the colonizers after them, and we are still here prospering. We have many generations to come, as Creator terries. But I would like to say that I appreciate the ability that we have is unique, and we have Indigenous people on the board, and we have such a deep history here. I give speeches to contractors who come into our areas who have no idea about what to look for as they're out digging and excavating. And I tell everyone, that's my grandpas, my grandmas, things that you guys are uncovering, they're very important to me because they're personal. And the archaeologists look for information and history of how we lived and how we survived. I look at it more as that's my grandma's stuff. And if you take it and send it to a dump disposal somewhere, then it's lost forever in that history. I've been involved in cleanup restoration, and whenever I find any artifacts, I thank Creator for having letting me touch the same exact item that my forefathers had in their hands, and that connection just gets stronger and stronger. And I thank them. I find these articles on top of mountains. Those were our highways from one place to another. I find them down along the creek beds and the lake, because those were the places where they hunted. Those were the places that they walked. And I walk, I'm walking in their same footsteps. It's an honor for me to say that. And so I just want to thank you guys for this honor today of recognizing these days because so many people have forgotten that Indians are still alive. I heard one story, they thought that all the Indians were sent down to Australia and that no one knew about Pomo people. We are so peculiar and interesting that Crowber brought all of his anthropologists and archaeologists and so on from the University of Berkeley to watch our big head dance in our roundhouse because it was right at their doorstep, such a resource. And so I take that very prideful, that my heritage is something that has been here for a very long time, and it has a root that's deep into the ground. It has a tie with the water and with the trees and the plants and the animals. Those were our resources that kept us alive through all the different ways that we were introduced to massacres and to annihilate our people just because we were here. They wanted what we had. So they ruined our whole ecosystem, our whole lifestyle, but we're still here. So recognizing this day gives people opportunity to remember for a brief moment that the Pomo people in Lake County are strong-minded in their will and their strength and their courage to survive. And that in itself is a testimony of who we are and our relationship with our surroundings and with Creator. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those words, and thank you, Supervisors, for bringing this to the board. Any comments from board members before we open it up for the public and move on? I just want to say that I went to go visit something this last summer. I went to Mesa Verde, and the uniqueness of ancient civilization that we are surrounded by, not just here in Lake County, but throughout the United States, but it definitely is screaming loud here in Lake County as well, is absolutely amazing. It is deep, it is rich, and I just want to say I couldn't be more proud than to serve alongside descendants of that rich history and that ancient civilization that still persists. And so happy to call you friends and happy to call you colleagues as well. So thank you very much for bringing this. That one spoke to my heart.
Oh, thank you.
Let's go ahead and open it up for the public, see if there's any comments. And seeing none, again, thank you so much, and let's go ahead and, oh, I'm so sorry.
You know, I just, I want to thank my fellow board members for bringing this to us, and I want to invite the public. I know that there will be information given at the Ely Stage Stop, I believe it's on October 9th at 2:00 PM, to understand more about our Native American community and what they have gone through. And I think it is vital for us here to understand the community we live in and what they had gone through. So I think we all need to be attending that to understand the history. Because I know for myself, I've tried to do some digging and some research, and there's not a lot of information out there. So I'm really excited to further my knowledge on our community and the Native Americans.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and move forward. We have item 7.2, Consideration of Letter of Support for Federal Legislation Expanding the Berriessa Snow Mountain National Monument. This was co-sponsored by myself and Supervisor Crandall. Wondering if Supervisor Crandall wants to speak on this item?
Yes, I'm very grateful that we're doing this letter. I know that we were working also with Victoria Brandon, and she had asked initially if we would conduct our own letter to support the congressman on this plight. And we are, we are really, I'm really glad because it's something that I've kind of struggled with when it comes to the other things that are being proposed at the Walker Ridge. So with this intact, you know, hopefully we can concentrate on preserving it the way it should be, so.
Right, and it is absolutely a great addition. I was lucky enough and fortunate enough to be invited by Tulio Mi Group to fly over the area. It is just a stunning area filled with rare plants, animals. It's the flight path for many of our migrating birds. It is just an amazing area that needed to be a part of the original. It was not part of the original, but now is looking through the National Monument Expansion Act to be added, and I think appropriately so. I do see that we have Victoria Brandon on with us, as well as Sean Mullen, a representative from Garamendi's office, and wondering if they would like to speak before we do open it up for further discussion.
Hi, this is Victoria Brandon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. I'm, I think Supervisors Crandall and Sabatier have pretty much said it, and you Supervisors have all had a chance to read the draft letter. I'm basically here to answer any questions, if the Supervisors have them. I'm really, really delighted that the county is going to take this position. This is a wonderful resource for our county, and it's underutilized and underrecognized, and adding it to the monument and having it be included in the comprehensive monument planning will give an opportunity for it to be recognized for what it is and to the benefit of the land and to the benefit of all of us in this community. So if you've got any questions, please let me hear them.
Thank you very much.
I will hold my peace.
And wondering if Sean Mullins has any words before we go ahead and open it up for further discussion with the board? And not seeing any activity, let's just go ahead and keep moving. Any questions or comments from board members on this item? All right, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments or questions on this item? And seeing none in the boardroom or in the Zoom room, let's go ahead and bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the letter of support for the Berriessa Snow Mountain National Monument Expansion Act.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a second by Supervisor Paeska. If we can have roll call, please. Johanna?
Yes, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I got lost. Let's move on further on the agenda to item 7.3. Consideration of a Letter of Commitment Between the County of Lake and Train Technologies Enabling Pursuit of Grant Funding Toward a Fire Main.
We're waiting for one other person to join us for 7.3. If you would be so kind as to take it up.
Microphone.
Okay, so we do not have all of the personnel that we need for this item, so we're going to go ahead and move forward. It's perfectly fine, I kind of repeated what you just said.
Thank you.
So because we don't have the personnel at this point in time or their staff, we're going to go ahead and move on, and we'll get back to that item. And I see that we do have Director Metcalf with us, so let's go ahead and take care of his two items. We'll start with 7.4. A, Consideration to Waive the Formal Bidding Process Pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services; and B, Consideration of Agreement Between the County of Lake and Redwood Community Services, Inc., for the Lake County RAP Program, Foster Care Program, and Intensive Services Foster Care Program for Specialty Mental Health Services for Fiscal Year 2021-22 for a contract maximum of $900,000, and authorize the Board Chair to sign the agreement. And before we go ahead and begin, I believe that we have a supervisor who would like to recuse themselves.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And so Supervisor Scott will recuse herself from this item. And Director Metcalf, let's go ahead and introduce the item, please.
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair and other members of the board. My name is Todd Metcalf. I'm the Director of Behavioral Services. I'm going to actually turn this over to my Administrative Deputy Director, Elise Jones, who I believe is in here somewhere, who will explain the item and answer any questions. And of course, I'll jump in when we're needed. Elise, are you here?
Yeah, she's in the attendees. If we can go ahead and move her over to the panelists.
Thank you.
Looks like that's happening. And there she is.
Good morning, your board. Good morning, Chair. Thank you, Director Metcalf. My name is Elise Jones. I'm Deputy Director of Administration for Lake County Behavioral Services. And I will describe this item by stating there are no other entities in Lake County who provide specialty mental health services to this population, and the population is primarily foster youth, so it's youth who are in the foster system. And to meet the criteria for those services, there's, there are no other entities that do that. We have worked alongside Redwood Community Services for many years now where they've been providing this, and we support them. The Department of Healthcare Services must certify all their sites for Medi-Cal billing. It's quite an intensive process, and so we've done that for them. So we're aware of any specialty mental health sites within Lake County, and we check that provider registry. And so that's the rationale, is that there are no other providers in Lake County, and it would not be beneficial to our client population to seek services outside of the county. It's much more convenient for those youth to receive services in their county.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Any further comments or questions? Okay, I know that I have spoken with Director Metcalf, so it won't come as a surprise to him and possibly the board as well. But the RFP process is to truly identify what all possibilities are out there, and seeing as this is another increase in comparison to the previous years, and for my opinion, not meeting the guidelines approved within the county code of 38.2 for the purchasing ordinance, I will be not voting in favor of this item at this moment in time. Any further comments before I open it up for the public? Okay, open it up for the public. Any questions or comments? All right, bringing it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I motion to waive formal bidding process pursuant to Lake County Code, Section 38.2, as it is not in the public interest due to the unique nature of goods or services.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a second by Supervisor Paeska. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake and Redwood Community Services Incorporated for the Lake County RAP Program, Foster Care Program, and Intensive Services Foster Care Program for Specialty Mental Health Services for Fiscal Year 2021 and 2022 for a contract maximum of $900,000, and authorize the Board Chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Paeska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Thank you.
And then let's go ahead, oh, let's wait for Supervisor Scott to come back in. Thank you very much for letting her know that we were done.
Mr. Chair, if you're going to go back and take up 7.3, I wanted to offer Matthew an opportunity to come into the chambers in physical form. He's in the office watching the Zoom room. I could watch the Zoom room. Matthew, are you, do you want to come in?
And we're going to take care of item 5.3, so that gives him a chance to be able to travel from, oh, that was super fast.
Okay, well, we'll do it in a minute. Thank you.
So let's go ahead and take up item 5.3, so Director Metcalf and his staff can be done. A, Approve Agreement Between County of Lake and High Country Security for Commercial Fire Alarm Installation as a Fixed Asset Under County Code 62-74, and Ongoing Monitoring of 14092 Lakeshore Drive Clear Lake for Fiscal Years 2019, 20, and 2021 for a contract maximum of $11,739.70, and authorize the Behavioral Health Services Director to sign the agreement. So the only reason that I pulled this was to clarify, if you look at the agreement, it only shows for $720 a year, which doesn't quite match what the title of this is, to approve for $11,000. So I did want to see if it was possible to share what I received from Director Metcalf last night, which is the actual invoice that we would be approving, which I think would be best to show, and so the public can be aware of what it is that we're looking at and also for the board, and then make that approval occur. And so I'm going to share my screen now that I have it open.
And Mr. Chair, our apologies for not submitting this document along with everything else. This thing has gone around and around, and I'm sure it was deja vu for a lot of you folks that remember this has come to you multiple times. So this is the missing. So this is the missing document. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I want to make sure that we're able to finalize this and never see it again. So I just want to show you, it says High Country Security, invoice 720-7022. It has all of the breakdowns. And then at the bottom, it does say $11,919.70, which is not a perfect match, but the 180 that you see here is part of the service annual agreement where they're paying for one quarter. It's $60 per month, hence the $720 that you see on the agreement that was placed. And so take that 180 away and you get the exact amount that we are approving today. And I am perfectly fine with this. I just wanted to make sure and clarify both for the public and the board so that we can move on. And so if there are any questions or comments from the board, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. And I'll stop sharing. Any comments or questions from the public? And let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agreement between the County of Lake and High Country Security for commercial fire alarm installation as a fixed asset under county code 6274 and ongoing monitoring. Can I stop there?
I think you still need to get to the total amount.
Oh, right, okay. For 14092 Lakeshore Drive Clear Lake for fiscal years 19, 2019 to 20 and 2020 to 21 for a contract maximum amount of $11,739.70 and authorize the Behavioral Health Services Director to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Pyska, a second by Supervisor Scott. Roll call, please. Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And so now we're going to go ahead and take up item 7.3. Consideration of a Letter of Commitment between the County of Lake and Train Technologies Enabling Pursuit of Grant Funding Toward a Fire Main Linked Auxiliary Supply Hydraulic Energy Storage System Project in North Lakeport. Almost lost my breath on that one. And if we can have Train and Matthew, if you want to sit down, that way when we have questions, you can remain right here at the front. And joining us is Matthew Rothstein. And from Train, we have Michael Day. Good morning.
Good morning, board. My name is Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. As always, it's a privilege to be here. As your board saw in their presentation of August 31, Train Technologies' Flashes System has the potential to bring a valuable combination of disaster and energy resilience to multiple Lake County communities. One of those communities is North Lakeport, where energy reliability and wildfire protection can potentially be provided to critical facilities such as the Lake County Jail, our Emergency Operations Center, and Sutter Lakeside Hospital. If we are to see such large-scale energy projects and disaster resiliency projects come to fruition in Lake County, capital grants are a key piece to the puzzle. As you're aware, large capital grant opportunities like the United States Economic Development Administration's $1 billion Build Back Better Regional Challenge are highly competitive. They want to see organizations that are cultivating strategic partnerships, like the work that your board and county staff have been doing, to build relationship with Sonoma Clean Power and Train. They also want to see projects that are ready to move forward. And that takes engineering work and other efforts that themselves are greatly enhanced by grant funding. The letter of commitment that's before your boards today is the logical next step in evaluating the viability of Train's proposed North Lakeport Flashes project. It must be approved today to allow Train the time necessary to complete a regional Build Back Better application by the October 19 deadline. Under this letter of commitment, Train will predominantly, at their own risk, undertake considerable efforts that can enhance not only the competitiveness of the North Lakeport project, but other regional efforts. If our regional application is funded, it can enhance the viability of a similar project being undertaken by Hidden Valley Lake Community Services District, for example. And their project would enhance energy and disaster resiliency for the more than 5,500 Lake County residents living in that community and thousands more in relatively close proximity. Those disaster and energy resilience-related benefits alone are considerable. And if Train is successful in obtaining an appropriate complement of grants and investor contributions on behalf of the county, the county may even see revenue as a result of the North Lakeport project. Train also represents there is no scenario wherein the project could be both viable as defined in the letter of commitment and result in an annual loss of revenue for the county. If the project won't be profitable, and that's defined as achieving a 12% internal rate of return, it just won't proceed. And again, the great preponderance of the risk is being assumed by Train. Provided your board continues to proceed in good faith toward development of the North Lakeport project as described in the letter of commitment, there will be no county financial obligations created as a result of today's action. Only if your board changes course despite Train delivering a viable investable project will the county be obligated to pay a $100,000 termination fee. At future stages, there will be new letters of commitment brought forth if the project continues to proceed as expected. And the termination fees associated with those will increase in consistency with the increased actual cost and risk being assumed by Train. However, again, those termination fees, like the one in today's letter of commitment, will only be triggered if the county elects not to proceed despite Train presenting a viable project. So to reiterate, if we continue in good faith, the county, with the exception of a small or modest amount of staff time, pays $0 out of pocket over the life of the project. And we have the potential to see considerable community benefits and even county revenue. Therefore, after much consideration, staff recommends that your board approve the letter of commitment before you today. And I'm very happy that Michael Day of Train is also present here in the chambers to answer the questions you may have.
Check, check. Thank you very much for that presentation. Mr. Day, would you happen to have any words for us or are you just here to answer questions?
I'm here to, I'm here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you so much. Any comments or questions from board members? So Supervisor Pyska and I met with Mr. Day and Mr. Rothstein to discuss this project and exactly what was presented here. I do want to say I appreciate the expediency of how fast Train is working to get these projects rather than coming back six months later, a year later, where we can see some very slow timelines sometimes when it comes to grant writing and things like that. I feel like you guys are really working fast to get us some projects in front of us so we can make a decision. And I appreciate that because some of these things happen so quickly, the technology changes so quickly. We don't want to waste any more time, and so I appreciate how fast you're working. Other than that, I'm ready to take some action. If no further comments, let's go, oh, Supervisor Simon.
I just got a question. Have you guys built any of these projects you've been talking about? I know you've been talking about them in Lake County here, so I just have a question.
Sure, that's, that's a totally legitimate question. The basic technology, I hope my microphone's working. The basic technology is called closed-loop pump storage hydro.
I know what it's called. I asked you if you guys have built any.
Oh, we have not built any yet.
That was my question.
I apologize. So basically, we're trying to use existing technologies in a new, in a new arrangement. So we haven't built a 35 million gallon water tank, but we have contractors who have. And we haven't built a 52-inch pipeline, but we have contractors who have. So while we haven't built the entire assembly, we've assembled a team that has built each of the individual parts.
So you guys have worked and completed these projects in other areas?
We're working towards completing them, and we've worked with contractors that have built every single element that would go into it. But this is a new arrangement of the existing elements.
Has a fancy maybe.
We haven't built one stem to stern and hooked it into a fire main system.
That's all I was looking for.
Okay.
So I understand the technology and we're looking at an innovation thing here, so I just want to make sure that everybody knows there is a risk to this. The $100,000 very much could come into play later on if we decide something else, you know. So I just want to have that conversation. I'm not saying I'm not in support of it, but we need to have that conversation and be open about that as we move forward with this project, because it seems like it's going to be a large investment and a long-term thing. And I will disclose that, Kevin, we met years ago when I first came on the board and you were talking about this project for Hidden Valley.
Yes, sir.
Being the first one in the county to be talked about, and now we're talking about in another area. So I just wanted to ask those questions while we're passing this on.
Mr. Chair, would it be okay if I make one additional comment?
Please.
So the combination of the fact that this proposed project relies upon existing technologies that have been proven time and time again, and in fact, the type of energy storage proposed is present in 95% to 97% of energy storage projects in the United States, they're just more typically dammed projects. So the fact that that technology is already so proven and also is being proposed here in a combination that is novel is part of what will make the county's grant applications competitive. It is something that is relatively new. It is also something that is replicable in other communities. So that's partly why this is good for this type of grant opportunity.
Right, thank you very much. I think also at this moment in time, I feel comfortable with moving forward for the, not extra risk, but for the balance of risk that is being taken right now, where right now Train takes the majority of the risk. If there's no solution that provides a benefit to us, it's done, no risk at all for us. At that point, if there is a benefit to us and we choose to move forward, at that point, that's when there's the risk that does come on. And I think that we have to look at new ideas. We have to be cognizant that some of these ideas may come back with different terms when we end up looking at the actual specs. And we just need to keep looking at the details, because it's going to be in the details. But in my opinion, when we're talking about fire suppression, we're talking about energy, these are things that we're dealing with, things that we need to find answers to. And I think the biggest barrier for any of these projects is funding. And so I think that's what slows it down the most. So I'm, same deal, I think we need to pay attention to what's coming back to us and not just say yes, but I'm also excited to see what kind of projects will come back to us, and then it'll be about how we get it done. And before I move forward, I want to make sure and ask Ms. Grant, who has her hand up, if she would like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And if you could speak in your microphone, please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to point out, just to ensure that you're clear on the exact language concerning the $100,000. The letter itself says, following the trigger event, if the parties are unable to agree on a further development agreement and/or other definitive agreements, as may be customary, necessary, or advisable, in order to implement the project within 90 days from the date of the last approved grant, which timeline may be extended by the parties in good faith by mutual agreement, the county will pay to Train in the amount of $100,000 for services and time invested by Train within 30 days of the date of Train's invoice. So it's not necessarily despite anything, it's simply if the parties are unable to agree. It's certainly up to your board in terms of this. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of the actual language that exists in the letter.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I appreciate that. You know, just want to bring up those things, you know, because obviously when you talk about innovation, it's an unknown and looking at this. So usually, you know, when we're doing a support letter for a grant, we know the outcome. It's something that's been tried and true and keep going. I understand, I appreciate the opportunity, and I understand the Build Back Better is going to give you an opportunity to innovate these new solutions, and it may be the answer down the road. But I just wanted to bring that up today, you know, just in consideration of this and make sure that we're looking at those things, because we've got, to make sure we're getting on these things and we're doing it right as we move into these new funding opportunities that are going to be coming down, because there's going to be a whole bunch more. And maybe this is the way it goes, but I just, there's no guarantee on this one, and I just wanted to be very clear about that. You know, and Supervisor Sabatier, you always want to know the numbers and be guaranteed that it's going to happen. And it's sitting there today like, well, it's innovation and we got to keep an eye on it. Well, it's $100,000 we're talking about keeping an eye on, so I just, I want to bring it up.
Thank you for that. Any further comments or questions before we move on? And let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments or questions from the public? And seeing none, bringing it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the letter of commitment between the County of Lake and Train Technologies Enabling Pursuant of Grant Funding Towards a Fire Main Linked Auxiliary Supply Hydrologic Energy Storage System Project in North Lakeport.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you. So I just got a quick call that we are going to have to revisit item 5.3. So let's reopen 5.3 if we can get a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and I believe that we just need a Part B to that, which needs to approve the budget transfer, as that was not in the motion. So if we could do Part A again, well, let's go ahead. Any discussion on the item? No? Open it up for the public? And no comment from the public, bringing it back.
Did I need to do a roll call on the reopen? Is that what we're doing right now?
Oh, sorry, I got a motion and, please, I'm so sorry.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, my apologies. County Council is advising that because the agenda didn't call out specifically the need to approve the budget transfer, that we should calendar that for next week so that it can be seen. This is the instrument that makes happen what you approved earlier, because it is a fixed asset that was not approved during one of the ordinary budget occasions, it does require board approval. Staff cannot approve this.
Okay.
But to make sure we're totally transparent, we'll put it on the agenda next time. I apologize.
That's particularly true when you're dealing with a financial item, public monies.
Okay. And is it possible to reneg on our reopening of 5.3, or do we have to go through the process of reapproving 5.3?
You need to take no action. Just because you reopen doesn't mean that you have to do anything.
Okay.
So then to clarify the action taken, stands?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I apologize.
No worries, just checking on each other. And let's move on to item 7.5. A, consideration to waive the formal bid process as the unique nature of the goods precludes competitive bidding and would produce no economic benefit to the county. And B, consideration of award for trailer-mounted emergency standby generators. And Director Ewing. Oh, we can see your lips move, but I'm not hearing you.
How about now?
There you go.
My apology. So as the, so Large Ewing, Public Services Director, as indicated in the memo, the county is the recipient of a hundred, about $183,000 Caloes Community Power Resiliency Grant. It is intended for emergency power or emergency communications equipment. That grant is managed by the County Administrative Office, and it was their intent, is my understanding, the intent was to use that funding for a new standby backup jail generator that Public Services is in the process of rounding up the design phase of that. However, with the realization that that project, the jail generator project, would not be completely installed by October 31, 2021, which is a date that the grant program requires, the Administrative Office requested Public Services last month to pursue a portable backup generator, actually generators in plural, one for the, for the new registrar voters' office, and then another for, basically to be determined buildings as necessary based on power outages. So Public Services staff scrambled and did what we could to find out what generators may be available with that very short timeframe of October 31, 2021, where the may be available with that very short timeframe of October 31st, 2021, where the generators not only had to be, you know, purchased, but they had to be on-site. For a temporary portable generator, it simply has to be on-site. It's not, it has to be attached and permanently affixed to the building like the jail generator. But nevertheless, it was problematic to find those. In light of that, we sent out an invitation for bids Monday, September 13th, a very short invitation for bids. Bids were opened this past Friday, September 19th. We did receive a handful of bids. The bid tabulation was attached to your, to the agenda item. The bids, we did not intend to go with a strictly low bid approach. The reason for this is the, these generators, to say one type of generator, one size, for example, I think what most people might be familiar with is a 100 kilowatt generator or a 60 kilowatt generator. If we knew exactly what we, what we could get by that date, then we may have been able to write a very specific set of specifications for this bid. In this case, however, we provided a range of generators from 60 kilowatts up to 150 kilowatts and among some other specifications that were included. The bid that we received, it was staff determination that the bid from LEET Generators would be the lowest responsible bidder. What that provides is two generators, two equivalent generators, both 100 kilowatt generators, I believe, yes, 125 kVA 100 kilowatt generators. And so along with this request, the recommendation, and I believe I need to make a minor adjustment to the recommended action, the recommendation first would be to waive the formal bidding process in as much as we did what we could to truly follow the letter of the law for the, for a formal bid. It's a compressed timeframe between Monday, September 13th, Friday, September 19th. It was very tight. Did not allow for a 10-day notice in a public newspaper. So for those reasons, we're requesting to waive the bidding process. The second part of the recommendation is to accept the bid from LEET and the adjustment really is rather than to award the contract, where I'm requesting that the board authorize the Public Services Director to issue a purchase order to LEET Generators in the amount of
Thank you very much for your presentation. Are there any comments or questions on this item? And as far as the waiving of the bidding, in my opinion, you needed three bids. You got five from what I see, and I don't believe that you need to have to go the lowest because equipment needs to meet the requirements of why we're looking for equipment. So whether it's being waived or it's not there, that to me works out both ways. So I'm willing to move forward on that one.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to take a moment to thank Lars and his staff for getting this done. I know the timeframe was super tight and the equipment is very limited and in short supply. So really grateful to him and his staff for getting this done.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll take a moment if I could to say I apologize that we couldn't get the jail generator installed by that date, but I'm glad we're hopefully able to use the funding for something for the county. Thank you, Carol.
Appreciate you still working on that. That's an important one, too. And so let's go ahead and open it up for the public since there's no comments from board members. And let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive the formal bidding process as unique nature of goods and services precludes competitive bidding and would produce no economic benefit to the county.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Crandall. Roll call, please, Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to make sure I get this right. Mr. Chair, I approve the purchase order to LEET Generators in the amount of $177,518.40 for two trailer-mounted emergency standby generators and authorize the Public Services Director to do that order?
To sign?
Yeah, to sign. Is that good, Lars? Is that what you were requesting?
Well, sir, the only change I would have is that approve the purchase order. The purchase order was not actually attached to the agenda, so I would just recommend that it would be to accept the bid from LEET Generators and authorize the Public Services Director to issue a purchase order to LEET Generators.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Crandall. Roll call, please, Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I believe the only item we have left is 7.1 and then a closed session. So let's go ahead and start with our supervisors' weekly calendar travel and reports. And we're going to start with Supervisor Simon.
Just finishing up the board meeting, I do want to report that we had a Risk Reduction Authority meeting yesterday at 3:00 PM. We do have our new members that were seated yesterday, which was excellent. I thought we're moving in the right direction. Like I said, again, that is our first meeting with a seat of seven on the Risk Reduction Authority and it's well-attended. I know that with the NCO coming on board, there are a lot of grants and opportunities out there, but we have submitted for our first grant, the Fire Safety Council Coordinator's Grant. And we are having our best fit meetings to make sure that we're all coordinating in the county and not competing against each other to bring funds in for risk reduction in Lake County and will continue to do that. So happy to have that first meeting and hopefully the attendance is just going to grow and the opportunities for Lake County will just continue. As far as, my calendar's kind of open this week. I do have a meeting on Thursday. You've heard me talk about it. We do have a wildlife issue down in South County. There is a bear that's been sighted quite a few times. We finally got fishing game. They're going to come out here, going to meet on Thursday. Hopefully, you know, it would be a good outcome. We can get them relocated and protect our community and also protect the poor animals that have been devastated by these fires and drought and everything else that are going on right now. That, yeah, I don't have much right now on the agenda unless I missed something. And I also forgot my phone this morning, one of those days. Do have football on Friday night. This weekend, we'll be attending a community event down in South County. Nothing on the 26th and then back here on Monday for a meeting with Carol and to our meeting on the 28th.
Thank you very much. And let's go on the opposite end with Supervisor Pyska.
So one other thing about the Risk Reduction Authority is that we owe a quarterly update to the board and so we're preparing that for October. So we're really looking forward to sharing everything that we've been working on. So Saturday was the coastal cleanup day and so I was in Kelseyville with our Angela Dow and a few other community members and we collected about 200 pounds of stuff from the creek bed. And I feel like we made a difference on that cleanup day. And I brought my daughter and she got a real close look at the, you know, how difficult it is to clean up microplastics when they start to deteriorate and there's really no way to get them out of the ecosystem. So that was a great morning for us. Then we had the Wine Alliance Wine Auction Dinner that evening with Supervisor Scott and CAO Hutchinson and we sat at the table with Congressman Thompson and witnessed quite a large amount of money being raised for our county. So it was a wonderful event. I just want to thank all the sponsors, all the volunteers, and mostly all the donors for stepping up. That, Lake County runs on that fundraiser. So thanks to everyone who participated in that. So tomorrow, are we having the meeting with Anita?
Haven't heard that yet.
Possibly.
Maybe I did.
I'm going to the Kelseyville Senior Center at noon. I'm meeting with Eric Sklar at 2:00. That's a cannabis resort in Big Canyon. Have you met with Eric yet? I think it's right inside your...
Nope, I have not met with Eric.
I met him a long time ago through Cloughberry Council and he reached out the other day and I'm more than happy to invite you to that meeting or connect you to him so that you can have an understanding of what he's been working on there. On Thursday, I don't have anything on Thursday. Friday is the Pear Festival Farm-to-Fork Dinner in the evening. Saturday is the first day of soccer. And Monday, there's an ad hoc committee meeting and then back here on the 28th.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Scott?
Yes, tomorrow I will be at the Veterans Stand Down from about 9:00 till about 1:30 helping sign in veterans to get the resources that are available for them. So if you're a veteran, head down to the fairgrounds. There'll be all kinds of resources and information for you down there. At 2:00, I will be attending a First Five Commission meeting that will be on Zoom. On Thursday, I have a Hope Rising Governing Board meeting from 9 to 11 and then a La Library meeting at noon and then hoping to listen to some of the Mental Health Advisory Board meeting at 3:00. On Friday, I have set aside that day to make my dessert for the Kelseyville Pear Dessert Contest. So that's a really important event for me to see if I can keep my first place ribbon. We'll see how we do. And then also attending the Farm-to-Fork Dinner that night. And then on Monday, I'll be preparing for Tuesday's meeting and also have a 4:00 meeting at Cock Carroll and Supervisor Pyska. And then 5:00, Scotts Valley Community Meeting via Zoom at 5:00.
Thank you. Vice Chair Crandall?
So I'll start off with the report on Saturday's coastal cleanup. Yes, I started out with the Rodman Slough cleanup. Thomas and his crew, they like to do it on the same days. So we're able to do that. And then I went to Blue Lakes and, you know, they have a coastal cleanup out there. Interesting, interesting finds here and there. And then I touched base with Marina in Upper Lake and went out to the reclamation area right across from the Bloody Island Monument. And I'll have to say, I agree with you on the microplastics. And one thing that I've been doing, and I've spoke about this before, is that I do find mail in some of the, you know, dump sites and whatnot. And before I had found one of the ladies that I, that I, you know, found mail of and I asked her if this was her garbage. She said her brother-in-law dumped it and I says, well, you have a week to clean it up. It worked. And so I have a new find, but I just don't have a last name. But I was able to find out that whoever Eli was, he's a mechanic because there's all kinds of parts and mechanic gloves and whatnot. In the process, there was a horse out there that, yeah, I stepped in whatever he was getting rid of and it was just even more frustrating. So that's even more why I want to, I want to find out Eli's last name because he dumped out of Bloody Island and it's frustrating. So either or, collected a lot of garbage, found some more dump sites out there. They like to go out to the reclamation area for whatever reason and dump. And so I wasn't able to get to Lucerne as I was cleaning that one dump site that they had. But a lot of people showed up and it was pretty good. So, yeah. Let's see, tomorrow, or, yeah, we have a gender review, I think, at 9:00 AM and then I'm preparing for the meeting on Thursday, which is the Blue Ribbon Committee meeting. Friday will more than likely be an office day if I could fit something else in and definitely will. And let's see, Saturday, usually they have a Native American, because it's the California Indian Days, usually they have something. Not sure if they are due to the COVID situation, so I'm not sure if I'll be going to that or not. Monday, back here with the meeting with CAO and that should be it.
Thank you very much. I wanted to speak real quick on the alert that came out on, I believe it was Wednesday evening, about the quality of the water and the heightened cyanobacteria in certain areas of the lower arm of the lake and near Clear Lake Oaks. Just really happy with the, how quickly the team came together. I want to thank Sarah Ryan for definitely being a leader in this as well as, want to thank Keith Ahart from Golden State Water for helping to ensure that people have access to water. And I don't know the specific name of the individual involved, but Mount Canuckdie Mutual Water as well, want to thank them for making sure that people have access to potable water so that we can deal with this situation and look for long-term, more long-term solutions. That happened within less than 48 hours, I want to say almost 24 hours. Things were already completed and just thankful that we got the alert in the evening of Wednesday night. Thursday morning by 8:00 AM, we were already meeting to discuss what we needed to do, what actions needed to be taken. Had another meeting later on in the, in the afternoon and it seemed just, everybody was pitching in to make sure that we help those that have private access to the lake, not through a public utility water district or not through some standardized treatment plant, but their own private treatment. And we just wanted to make sure that they had access to potable water. And so just wanted to make sure and highlight that group work because it was definitely something we should be proud of that we were able to pull together. Let's get some rain because that's really the solution that will help us all out. On Saturday, thankful for Daniela over at Water Resources and everyone else up there for coordinating the coastal cleanup. I know that I was hanging out with CC4C and as well as, I want to say it was a group of about 15 upward bound high school students from Lower Lake High School. And so thankful for everybody who put effort in helping to make our community that much cleaner. Then let's move on to what's going on in the following week. I, too, will be passing by to check out the stand down happening at the fairgrounds. Later on, taking part in the Lake County Fire Protection District meeting. I will be having a, I believe, on Thursday at 8:30, having a discussion on an issue that has come up based on just property, and I'll just leave it at that, issues on properties. Right now, I'll keep it vague, but we're having a meeting with staff to figure out what's our next steps. And then I will be meeting on Friday with Supervisor Hascheck from Mendocino to discuss what they're doing over in Mendocino for legal grows, how we can maybe work together and maybe stealing some of their ideas that are being successful and of course, sharing what it is that we're attempting to do as well to see how we can better coordinate between the two areas. That's all that I have so far that I'm seeing. I thought I had more. And then meeting with Carol and getting prepared for our 28th and meeting back here on Tuesday. And so that will do it for today. Our last items are all in closed session and we will have 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, Title Director, Health Services Director. 8.2, Public Employee Evaluation, Title Director, Behavioral Health Director. 8.3, Sitting as the Board of Directors of the Lake County IHSS Public Authority Conference with A, Chief Negotiator M. Long, County Negotiator C. Markatan, M. Dolby, and A. Chamansky. And B, Employee Organization, California United Home Care Workers Union Local 4034.
You have Joan Azarina.
Oh. Is this for a closed item that you wish to have a public comment?
And actually, what you reported actually has.
Okay, so let's go ahead. For this item, 8.3, we have public comment. Thank you. I had my head down.
First of all, John Moss, I want to discuss water. I was helping a neighbor apply...
And so we're not having a discussion on water right now? I'm reading the...
Well, you reported on it, so I thought I'd give you some information.
And our report is not meant for discussion? If you want to wait till we're done with the meeting, then we can have a discussion?
Okay, and I would like to...
Public comment is earlier in the agenda where the, whatever is not on the agenda can be addressed by the public. This is our chance to report out on what it is that we're doing. If you want to have a further conversation afterwards, we can.
Okay, I'll talk to you outside. I want to know when the results of the adjourned, the legal adjourned, the closed session items? It's never reported publicly and we have to really work hard to get the results. I think you have to... I think you have to announce it publicly what happens at the closed session.
And we do announce it and there are times that we could do better when there's nothing to announce, but if there is something to announce, we absolutely announce it publicly here in the board chambers.
And you can't give me a timeline when you might be.
Because we never know when we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you. 8.4, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Chief Negotiator M. Long, County Negotiator C. Hutchinson and P. Samick and B, Employee Organization, LCDDAA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSEA and LCSMA. 8.5, Conference with Temporary Representatives Designated to Meet with County Department Heads Regarding Salary and Benefits in Unrepresented Management Employees. 8.6, Conference with Temporary Representatives Designated to Meet with Confidential A and B Employees Regarding Salaries and Benefits. And with that, we will go into closed session. We will start here in the boardroom and then move on to the Zoom room for our final items for closed session. Thank you very much.